Welcome everyone to our meeting, our regular Board of Education meeting. It's Monday, October 7th. Please stand and join the end. We are the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission of the White Plains City School District is to educate and inspire all students on their dreaming, their dreams, so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world.
I want to take a moment to acknowledge the School Board. School Board Recognition Week is the 21st to the 25th, and certainly we'd like to offer a collective thank you to the Board of Education for all the many, many hours that you devote to our children, both at the board table and certainly all throughout the district, whether it be play, or a game, or a meet, or meetings with parents. You're always there, and we're very grateful for that. So, in lieu of a check for $35,000, just to get our unending thanks.
Thanks for going to the meeting.
Absolutely. We thank you too, because honestly, this is our passion, teaching every one of us. We're all very different people, but it is all about the kids, and that's why we're here.
Absolutely. Top 7. Thank you. Next, we're going to move into public participation. Do we have any public participation? The public is invited to address the Board and Superintendent on any matter relating to the White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administrators, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature. Thank you, and please step to the podium and please state your name and address. Thank you.
Good evening, good morning. Good evening. I'm Christine McMass, and I'm here today as a perfect follow-up to Dr. Rika. During School Board Recognition Week, the WPTA would like to take this opportunity to thank you for your service. The work that you do is a challenging and time-consuming responsibility. We appreciate all the hours that you put in when you know that you could be doing many other things. The decisions that you make directly impact the learning experiences that we provide for our students of White Plains. Because of the work you do, our students have so many opportunities to achieve their dreams. Thanks to the steady leadership, we have the resources in place to do our best work each and every day for the children that we serve. We are grateful for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening, Dave. I'm Susan Norpitt, and I have the PTA council and all the PTA units in the district. We are here in advance of New York State Board of Education Week to offer our sincere thanks for the work each one of you do, does, to support the students of White Plains School District. The vision of the current district's future plan is to aspire to unlock the infinite and unique potential of each student every day. It is your dedication to help to make it possible for our district to achieve those aspirations and to ensure a healthy and safe learning environment for our kids. The only thing that remains constant is change. You are constantly finding ways to remain proactive in an ever-changing world. The countless hours you devote that take each of you away from your family and professional lives, provide an opportunity for our students to be successful in their day. We truly appreciate your support of the White Plains PTA, and are excited to continue to collaborate and grow our partnership. At times it might seem like thankless work, we appreciate all you do and the effort and support and service you provide to our community. Thank you.
You have a meeting to go to, right? Thanks for coming. Two places at once, Mrs. Norpitt.
Hi, I'm Addis Dossel. I have a nine-year-old at Post Road Elementary School, Post Road Cloud. I already brought this idea up to Mrs. Sorio, who mentioned it to Dad, and so that I'm very grateful. But when I found out it was Post Road's turn at the Board of Education, as well as our World of Learning Prevention Day, it felt like the planets aligned for this conversation. So I think I'm here to speak about the room for education and empathy and kindness in As I started talking to other parents about this topic, both Post Road and other elementary schools, the concern isn't just about me and kids, but also about the followers. White Plains population is made up of a very diverse socioeconomic and cultural background. I understand that there are programs at Eastview Highland and the high school. I also understand that in eighth person second grade, kindness is often spoken about. I'm aware of the schools and how they speak to the children after there's any incident. Mrs. Sorio was planning to have a very long conversation with me about this, and I'm thankful for her taking the time to explain. I think that we need to develop a curriculum in White Plains to provide kids with, to provide them with the recognition that you do, like you do math and reading and attendance. We can provide them with skills to intervene and how to react, to teach, to teach them to value and celebrate their shared differences. And I don't want to use the word "talents," because I'm not a big fan of talents. My son especially needs just in case. And I think that this affects all children. All these skills can eventually cross over to cyberbullying, peer pressure, and bigger issues that our children will face in the future. The more I speak about this, the more guidance I receive from teachers, parents, faculty, and even at a district level. And I thank you for all of you who have started this conversation. There are so many projects that we can be a part of, Be Kind Project, Make Kindness the Norm, and my favorite to date that I've researched, Be an Upstander. I'm hoping to have White Plains in the frontline of creating upstanding global citizens. I would love to coordinate something to teach all needs for students, and thank you for your time. That's it.
We have a, good evening, the Post Road Village. Thank you so much for coming, Post Road. I also, we have a number of reports that are going to be within the superintendent's report this evening, but I want to just hit a couple of topics that are of import to the Board and our community. First of all, happy birthday to Rosemarie. Also, it's Principal Appreciation Month, so thank you very much to our Principal Annie Sorio. And also, Teacher Appreciation or World Teacher Day was the other day, and thanks so much to our faculty members for everything they can do for our children, each and every day. Faculty, staff, sports staff, everybody works so hard for our kids, and we really do appreciate that. We have presentations this evening from our auditors, as well as our Social Studies Department and our New York State Assessments. I do want to make mention that the district is going to be receiving an award from Lion Electric on Thursday. Dr. Carol Teich is going to travel up to its grand opening. Lion Electric, of course, is the company where we purchased the, well, where National Express purchased the electric school buses, and the district is being recognized for its jumping into the pool of sustainability in New York and really raising awareness nationwide related to EV vehicles being utilized by school districts. So thanks very much to Ann for going up and representing our district. We've had so many open houses, picnics, we're celebrating this back heritage, PTA meetings, we had Special Adults Take Your Child to Work Day, we have Real Kids Wear Pink and real men wear pink, we have Anti-Bullying Day and Anti-Bullying Awareness. So many amazing things happening throughout the district, and I just want to take a moment to thank everybody who has helped to volunteer to make those opportunities a reality for our children. It doesn't happen without a lot of support in the background, so thank you. We also had Homecoming on Friday at WPHS, and it was a great day. The weather couldn't have been better for Homecoming. But we also, the very same day, our students organized the Climate Strike Walkout at the high school, which was also extraordinarily successful. We had over 1,000 students participate in the walkout. So just a huge shout-out to our White Plains High School community and, most importantly, our students for always just bringing a first class to all the work that you do. It didn't hurt that we also dominated the football game and won. We have, the White Plains Basics are going to be kicking off in the district on November 4th. This is very exciting for us, and we're looking forward to that initial kickoff. The District Equity Committee has, we're in the process of soliciting interest from members of the community for the Equity Committee. We've already, we're up over 75 folks who have volunteered their time. This is not a small time commitment. This is seven full-day meetings. The volunteers have really come from all over the city and our educational community. And I also want to thank, thank our local media as well for promoting the opportunity outside of the school district community per se, so that other folks in White Plains understand that this opportunity exists. So that closes on the 18th, and then we will compile the committee or comprise the committee, and we'll be off and running. On the agenda this evening are superintendent's goals and objectives. Thanks to Board for working with me, developing those collaboratively. And I do want to, you know, I'm meeting with our principals now, we're talking about their goals and their objectives, and I'm always very, very impressed by them. But I have to tell you, I had a meeting today, and I was talking to our middle school principals, and they are now articulating from elementary to sixth, to seventh, and meeting on a monthly basis and making those connections, which I think is absolutely fantastic. That will only help to strengthen our transition processes as students move forward, and we're certainly going to continue to support that effort. And finally, before we move to our auditors, Dave and Chris who are here, I just want to take a moment to extend holiday wishes and an easy fest as we're celebrating tomorrow. And certainly to our students, remember, we don't have, or not tomorrow, rather, on Wednesday, you don't have school on Wednesday, but you do have school on Thursday. So without any further ado, gentlemen, welcome.
Thank you. Sorry we took too much of your time this evening, but we do appreciate you giving us the opportunity to come and speak tonight. We just wanted to just highlight the Board on the financial statements. We did meet with the Audit Committee earlier this month, so just wanted to give you a little bit of background of the financial statements and, of course, any questions you may have. So first, again, my name is Dave Teller, I'm the Audit Partner with the firm Rocky Smith. We perform the external audit of the school district. We audit the financials for the year in June 30th, 2019, as well as perform the single audit of the federal work programs and extra classroom activity plans. Just to get this one opportunity each year, so I maybe am a mistake if I didn't always take it, is to, you know, let the Board know what a great business office they have. It's led by Ann, she has great help by Marcy and everybody else. We have the tremendous amount of help and being able to get through an audit engagement so quickly, so accurately, is just a testament to how great a job that they do on a day-to-day basis. So they might not get always a lot of credit, but I'd like to take the opportunity to kind of give them some, but they did a great job, as always. We had another terrific year, currently closing of the books and records, excellent cooperation. We were able to come into the school district in about 145 days after the year enclose, and we were able to come in and look at the books and records, and everything was found to be completely in order. As you know, this is a very large picture. So it's just quite a bear to close a district of this size and not magnitude of the transactions and still come up accurately. So it really is impressive to the business office. Just a little bit about the actual numbers itself. In the audit report, all of our audit reports, auditors' opinions were clean or unmodified opinions. There were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses found in the internal controls as we reviewed them. We had no suggestions or anything that we, anything that we defined to strengthen internal controls or policies, so we're very happy with that. Just to go through a couple of things, we wanted to just alert the Board that the district was obviously within all allowable limits for not only the New York State Tax Cap, but the fund balance limitations that are placed on school districts. For the year, the general fund had positive variances compared to budget. It was a very tight budget. We actually came in over budget on the revenues and under budget on the expenditures to lead to a positive bottom line. The district continues to move in a good position going forward, but obviously every year there's the challenges, and with the tax cap and the increases to various retirements and health insurance plans and things of that nature, so, which is strategically managed on, at the budget level by the business office. For the year, the district had capital assets netable depreciation just under $150 million. During the year, the district made principal bond payments of about $5.8 million to reduce its outstanding bonds to $70.7 million at the end of the year. During the year, the district did transfer $10 million out of its capital reserve to fund various capital projects. And overall, your total revenues in the general fund increased about 1.9%, primarily in taxes and uses of mines and properties, things of that nature, while your total expenses actually increased 2.9%. So they did come in a little higher, but again, they were all within the budget, budget allowable limits. And that was kind of it, just kind of a real, you know, brief snapshot of the financial statements, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have about the audit, your report, you know, what we do.
I got a prep question. What's, what kind of opinion do you have given on it, such as ours? And then how does it rank? And what kind of rating is it? Is it your best or worst?
It's definitely, it's definitely the top.
Yeah, I'll throw you a softball.
Yeah, yeah, thank you, thank you. It really is. I mean, like I said, we have tremendous controls, we've got a great business office, everything's being managed appropriately. Your, your budget and the numbers at the end of the year are solid, you're in sound financial footing, you're not in financial distress and things of that nature. I mean, overall, it is, it's a good report. Doesn't mean that come back next year, and I, you know, hopefully I can get the same number as I did, but every year unfortunately it's changed. But as it stands now, it is a very sound financial report.
I should say that in the Audit Committee, we received a line-by-line version of this, and more than 100-plus pages of audit materials, and it was beautifully done, and thanks again to Ann and Marcy who never sleep.
Yes.
And to your colleague who came into the Audit Committee and really went through things very patiently and answered all our questions.
I'm expected to own this, so I apologize.
Yeah, no, but we appreciated you being there.
We didn't want you coming in, actually.
I did your best. I tried to be respectful enough.
Thank you, Ann, the business staff, and our Audit Committee volunteers too, Tim Donahoe and Craig Monch, who are our community volunteers, and they graciously donate their time as well, so we certainly appreciate that as well. Thank you.
I have to echo that, Jim. We have some great community volunteers on the Finance Committee, and we're very fortunate that you're so engaged. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lauren Elmer. My name is Lauren Elmer. I'm a senior at White Plains High School.
Hi, everyone. I'm Esteban Barero. I'm also a senior at White Plains High School.
So to kind of kick it off, we've had fall sports in swing for the last couple months. The season actually ends in a month or two, I believe. But just to kind of recap, as Dr. Rika said, we had Homecoming on Friday, absolutely crushed it. That was great, and the energy and the student status was fantastic. We had signs and flags going everywhere. We've also had a lot of records broken in the beginning of the season so far, particularly girls cross-country. There's one freshman, I'm actually forgetting her name, who's broken like three records, three school records in one season, so excited to see the future for her. And I would also like to point out that the Homecoming Game on Friday was sponsored by Coda, which is a new partnership we've established with SAD, the Students Against Drunk Driving Club at the high school. It's known, it's called Co-curring Sorter Awareness, and it was basically meant to kind of bring awareness to enter, to the dependency on drugs and mental illness through, to the student population at our school. It was a very successful movement. In the theater world of the high school, the fall play Julius Caesar is going to be happening at the beginning of November, I believe it's the first weekend, and the Winter Musical is going to be announced, and I'm very excited about that. Otherwise, other clubs are in full swing at that high school, everything's going great. A new season that is starting is the college application season for all the seniors. Not the most fun, but the guidance department is doing a really great job helping us all out, kind of navigate the whole thing. A lot of families are coming together. The FAFSA Night is happening soon, which is the financial aid help center for all of our stressed-out parents. And the other season I'd like to point out is the season of volunteerism and giving, which is coming up pretty soon, particularly the Spooktacular is happening at the elementary school. That's a big deal at the high school because for clubs like Key Club and the Night Run, all the volunteer community service organizations, it's kind of the start of rallying students to help other people in the district. So soon after that, if you're interested, we're doing a coat drive with Key Club at the high school. If you have any old coats you need to clear out, we're taking them and bringing them to a bunch of shelters, people in need. So, yeah, approach me after that if you have any questions. Thank you.
So, yeah, there's a lot of stuff going on right now. So on Friday, we also had, not only did we have the Homecoming Game, we also had a really fun pep rally for fall. Also, to add to records getting broken, we had actual, an eighth grader, I think she broke her, like, swimming.
500 yards swim. She's broken that record a couple of times.
Yeah, a couple of times since the seventh grade.
Yeah, I have to tell you, yeah, that is extraordinary for someone that age in eighth grade, and I can only tell you that greater things are to come. She's going to bring us a lot of accolades.
No pressure.
She's already done a phenomenal job, yeah, and she's already on that, she should be on the record board already, I have to check.
Yeah, and, yeah, our community service club just started to meet, a bunch of clubs are starting to meet, our National Honor Society is about to start up again, and so, yeah, juniors and seniors are going to be volunteering again a lot, you know, it's gonna, the rate is gonna go up. And, yeah, that's pretty much, I was trying to think about what happens instead of ready.
Well, trunk or treat.
Oh, yeah, trunk or treat. We're going to be hosting that for Halloween at the school. There's going to be students bringing their cars with like, like candy in their trucks, and kids are going to be coming.
And you guys are taking donations of candy right for it now, I believe, as well.
And decorations.
And decorations.
Yeah, and so like, the student governments and like, you know, classes for, governments for like individual classes, ready to start like fundraising, like, you know, for proms and all that stuff. Like at the open house, there was a bunch of like, all types of like, yeah, clubs being.
Thank you very much. Just want to reiterate again, you know, we're, we're working toward raising awareness for breast cancer as well. This month, the 25th, is going to be Real Kids Wear Pink Day all throughout the district, so anybody who's looking to take part in that at the student level, we're definitely encouraging our kids to as well. It was a real honor, I'll tell you, to kick off the Westchester County Breast Cancer Awareness Pink Drive as Superintendent with a seventh grader from the middle school. She was really great. Yeah, it was, it was phenomenal. He stole the show just by standing there. It was really fantastic. So please consider participating on the 25th with us as well. With that, I would like to now invite Dr. Ann to the podium to present an update on our annual 3-8 Assessment outcomes. Thanks, Dr. Ann.
Thank you. Thank you for providing me with an opportunity to review the results of the 2019 New York State ELA and Math Assessments and the New York State Region's results. In 2019, New York State maintained the design of the grade three, grade assessments for a two-day administration. The 2018 assessment results established a baseline, and the results from the 2019 administration can be compared to the prior year results. That was different than previously because they were changing the test as they were going along. In 2019, 49% of our third graders scored a proficiency level of three or a four on the ELA assessments. 41% of our fourth graders scored a level three or a four, and 34% of our fifth graders. Overall, in grades three through five, test results in 2019 were similar to the test results in 2018, and growth was quote-unquote "flat" for the most part. It is important to note that the New York State averages for the exams, as they move from third grade, fourth grade, and fifth grade, they actually follow our trends. With third grade, the, the New York State average at third grade being 52%, 52%, the grade four average being 48%, and then the grade five average being 38%. So you see that, that gain in third grade, and then that dip as you go, fourth and fifth grade. For grades six, seven, and eight, 45% of our sixth graders demonstrated proficiency on the New York State ELA assessment, while 39% of our seventh graders and 50% of our eighth graders demonstrated proficiency respectively on their grade level assessments. Looking at the graphs, you will see dips at the sixth and seventh grade levels and steady increase at the eighth grade proficiency levels. As we are now in the second year of a test with the same format, we will be looking very closely at trends as we move forward. It is important to note that the state average for grade six is 47%, and for grade eight, the state average is 40%. In grade eight, the state average, oh, excuse me, and for, in grade seven, the state average is 40%. In grade eight, the state average is 48%. With that said, again, our middle school scores are comparable with performance across the state. Overall, the results in grades three through eight on the New York State ELA assessments illustrated a change in proficiency from 45% in 2018 to 43% in 2019, with an overall state average of 45. So we're right within that state average. Looking at the cohort data, over three years, we noticed that there is a dip in the cohort performance of our fifth grade students demonstrating proficiency from third grade through fifth grade, which I mentioned before, is also reflective in state averages. However, the cohort performance of our sixth graders noted a strong gain from fifth to sixth grade. It was nine percentile points. Our seventh grade cohort demonstrated, demonstrated a gain in sixth grade of 19% from their fifth grade performance. However, we see inconsistent performance in the sixth grade to seventh grade performance, illustrating a decline of 16%. So that cohort kind of leveled off from that 36 to the 55 and back to the 39. For the eighth grade cohort, we see a steady gain as they move from sixth grade to eighth grade, moving from 35 to 46 to 50. And now for math. In 2019, 44% of our third graders demonstrated proficiency on the New York State Math Assessment by scoring a three or a four. In grade four, the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency was 49%, and in grade five, the percentage of students demonstrating proficiency was 39%. Looking at the trends, we can see growth in our fourth grade results over time, while third grade has illustrated fluctuations in performance, and fifth grade has illustrated a dip from one year to another year. I know it's a lot of numbers, so I'm trying to let you, with the graphs as I speak. In grades six, seven, and eight, in grade six, 46% of our students demonstrated proficiency on the New York State Assessment, while 48% of our students in seventh grade demonstrated proficiency on the math assessment. In grade eight, New York State results don't include the students who are taking the region's exams, so the data isn't an accurate reflection of all of our students' performance. We look at the grade eight region's data a little bit later in the presentation. Our overall performance in grades three through eight on the New York State Math Assessment illustrated a change in proficiency from 41% in 2018 to 44% in 2019. So we went slightly down in ELA and slightly up in mathematics when you look at our overall results, grades three through eight. Looking at our cohort data, this room is so nice and quiet, we noticed a dip in performance of the fifth grade in 2019. New York State maintained the design of those tests for that two-day administration, so the 2018 results can be baselined and, and we can compare those results to 2019. So it is important for us to take a look at that cohort data as they're moving through, as we see that 41% and then moving to a 39% for our fifth grade students. And then as we move from our sixth grade cohort, our sixth grade cohort in 2019 is showing that proficiency rating of 46, moving from fourth grade to fifth grade with that 42-42 being leveled and established, and then moving slightly up to and then moving slightly up to forty-six. In our seventh grade cohort, we see an overall gain from forty-five to forty-eight with that dip that had occurred when they were sixth graders. And then a similar thing happens with our eighth grade cohort, moving from six, seven to eighth grade with that high of sixty-five. Now we've included the Algebra Regents with it, but moving from that fifty-eight to fifty-one. So we're seeing those fluctuations as the children move through the grade levels as a cohort as well.
Excuse me, Debbie. So the geometry Regents though is not included in that data?
You know what, thanks for asking that question. We haven't, I was working with Ronda Les, and the geometry Regents wasn't traditionally included in this metric, so we thought that it best to leave it out because if we're going to be comparing it to the two years prior with the cohorts, we wouldn't be able to include that then.
Okay. And I guess the other question is, so proficiency with respect to Regents, are we talking about a score of sixty-five and above?
Yes, sixty-five and above.
Okay.
And now for test refusals. Because test refusals come to play an awful lot in how we're viewing these, these test scores and our proficiency ratings over time. So along with the changes in the assessments over the past few years, another challenge in interpreting, interpreting results has been the number of test refusals at each grade level. In 2019, fifteen point nine percent of our grade three through eight students were noted during test administration as refusing to take the test. Another, you know, quote-unquote opting out of the test. Out of the fifteen point nine percent, fifteen percent scored a level one on the 2018 exam. Thirteen point two scored a level two on the 2018 exam. Thirteen point two a level three and four point nine a level four. I'm mentioning that because what we're noticing in our opt-outs is we are beginning to increase, even though we're slightly increasing our test refusals, the number of students who had scored a level three or a four previously is starting to grow. So our opt-outs are beginning to change. Our refusals are beginning to change. And that's true in both categories. That's going to be true in ELA and that's also going to be true in math. Just so I can explain the rest of the graph to you, out of that fifteen point nine percent who refused to take the test, nineteen point four of that population were students with disabilities, eleven point three were English language learners, and fifty-two point four were economically disadvantaged.
What percentage of students who take the test period are economically disadvantaged?
Overall?
Yeah.
I would say that we have about fifty percent of our students.
So let's not, let's get a different.
And that's what I mentioned last year too, because a lot of times we'll say, who is opting out? And it really is our spectrum of children. It includes a little bit of everybody. But what we are noticing is a growth in our level threes and fours from previous years, which also has to be taken with a little bit of a grain of salt too, because many of our children aren't opting out after taking a test. They're opting, opting out after not taking the test. So then we don't have the data on them because they didn't take a test the previous year.
Right, I was wondering if there's any tracking of, you know, what percent of the kids opting out, opted out the previous year? Is it mostly the same kids who tend to opt out?
No, actually it's not, which is really strange. You know, it really is. It seems like there's, there's kind of like a pattern of taking the test and then not taking the test. But yeah, I mean, it's, it's really hard to track this data because children do refuse to take tests for different reasons too. And they're, we're talking about fairly large numbers still.
And you can refuse the math and just the ELA.
Yeah, and we have that happen.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was going to ask. And also like Deb, for even like the ELA, you know, do we keep account of students that opt out one year and then opt back in and, you know, and then take it the next year? Does that happen or do we not?
You know, I don't think that we run as much data on test refusals as that. I think it would be time-consuming. But just like, just to give everybody like a numbers kind of take on this, in mathematics, in third grade, we had forty-six refusals. In fourth grade, we had forty-three refusals. In fifth grade, we had fifty-four refusals. And then those numbers begin to jump as the kids get into sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Math in sixth grade, a hundred and thirteen. Math in seventh grade, a hundred and thirty-two. And math in eighth grade, a hundred and thirty-nine. So, you know, we really just, you have to kind of take this all into consideration when you're looking at the testing data. It's not easy to analyze, and that's why my last slide, I'm going to say, remember that this is one data point. This is one performance point for a child. And there are many other performance points, many other, you know, pieces of an academic profile that we should be looking at. Well, thank you for being interested in those two stuff. So this is kind of like an overview of what I just explained. And again, in ELA for grades three through five, the test results in 2019 were overall, overall very similar to test results in 2018, which now is that quote-unquote "flat" way of explaining things. In ELA for grades three, for grades six through eight, test results from 2018 to 2019 illustrated a decline in proficiency for grades six and seven, which obviously we're going to take a close look at, but steady increase in grade eight from 2017 to 2019 with a gain in proficiency from forty-two to fifty percent. Strong cohort performance in ELA from 2017 to 2019 for grades four through six and grades six through eight cohorts. The four through six cohort data illustrated the gain in proficiency from thirty-seven to forty-five percent. And six to eight cohort illustrated a gain in proficiency from thirty-five to fifty percent. So these are some of our, our highlights. Steady gains in math from 2017 to 2019 are being made in grades four, six, and eight. Grade four data has illustrated a gain in proficiency from forty-two to forty-nine percent. Six has illustrated gain in proficiency from forty to forty-six percent. And grade eight data has illustrated a gain in proficiency from eight to thirty-three percent with the math eight exam only. I want to give a shout out to the Coordinator of Mathematics six through twelve because he did a little mini-program evaluation last year on the Read 180 program. Found that we really weren't getting the results of children who were in the Math 180 program, comparing that to the results of the students that weren't taking Math 180 that needed that extra support to meet grade level standards. Really didn't see that Math 180 was making the gains that we wanted. We changed that and we are making it more teacher-directed and more aligned with the actual eighth grade curriculum. And our results showed it. So I just want to say to Al Laporte, you know, thank you very much for picking up on that and for doing that little mini-program evaluation. Strong cohort performance in math, 2017 and 2019 for the six through eight cohort. The cohort data has illustrated a gain in proficiency from fifty-eight to sixty-five percent, including the students taking the Algebra Regents in grade eight. If we do include the geometry students in that calculation, it goes up to sixty-eight percent. And the proficiency of grade eight students scoring at or above sixty-five on the Algebra Regents was ninety-nine. And the proficiency rating of students scoring sixty-five or above on a Geometry Regents was one hundred. And I also want to point out that I don't have their mastery levels unless you want me to look for them quickly, but they are very, very strong and they are also growing.
And mastery level is eighty-five?
Eighty-five. Because that question does come up, you know, are we, are we preparing them not only to take the test in middle school, but are we preparing them as they move up through high school? So I already mentioned some of the challenges in tracking the data longitudinally, including the number of test refusals along with any changes in the format, timing, and content of the exams. Improving the performance of our subgroups, especially special education and L students, is another challenge that we are focusing on. One thing I wanted to mention that the new ESSA accountability rules have one metric where all students who were noted as refusing to take the test are given a level one for accountability focuses. So they, they do find in this very, very long spreadsheet of metrics a way to kind of say, you know, we're holding you accountable for your test refusals. It's, it's, it's combined with other metrics, so sometimes it gets lost, but it can also give you a false.
Right, it's not accountability, it's skewing the data. It's just giving you false data, that's not accountability.
But they are holding you accountable for that.
Saying we give you a failing grade when you didn't take.
When you didn't take the test.
And are the parents aware that that is part of what's happening?
Well, we're trying to get the word out right now. It doesn't have an impact on students.
On the kid, right.
It has an impact on our district. And how we present.
Well, I think, and I think that's one of the reasons why the government has lost so much support in this enterprise in that the question really has hit the general public. Is this a function where we're trying to move our students forward? Or is this a function of us trying to find fault within our public schools?
Punishing schools.
And then areas for growth include continuing to improve our resources and refine our instructional practices. For example, this current school year, we have upgraded to Envision 2020 in mathematics in grades three through five. We made that upgrade last year in grades K through two. In ELA, we are continuing to focus on tracking student progress in reading throughout the year with our own internal measures. And we have been focusing on classroom libraries and implementing the TC units of study in reading and writing in grades K through five. In middle school, we are implementing the Big Idea Math Program and have made adjustments like the one that I just mentioned with the Coordinator of Mathematics in both ELA and Mathematics. Our work is to create rigorous learning experiences that cognitively engage students to comprehend complex text, think critically, and develop the mastery of math concepts as well as fluency in computation. So you really can't prepare for these exams. The only way that you can prepare for these exams is to really teach the students and to make sure that you're raising the rigor and the expectations for all students. Another area of continued growth is to encourage building administrators and teachers to share within and across grade levels in schools so that we can learn from each other's successes while building and sustaining a collaborative culture for continuous improvement and teamwork. That's really what's going to make the difference. And just a really brief overview of the Regents' Exams at the middle school level. Our final two slides illustrate our New York State Regents' Results in eighth grade. If our students are accelerated in math, they take the Algebra I Regents and/or the Geometry Regents. Ninety-nine percent of the students earned a score of sixty-five or better on the Algebra I Regents, and one hundred percent of the students taking the Geometry Regents earned a score of sixty-five or better. And seventy-three percent of the students taking the Earth Science Regents in eighth grade scored a sixty-five or better. And I just want to remind everybody that this was a year that we went Earth Science for all. So that includes, you know, the majority, if not all, of our eighth graders. There were, you know, a few kids that we didn't, that we're going to include this year, but that is a large proportion of our, of our eighth grade students. And then finally, this is a slide that shows our high school Regents' Results. At the White Plains High School, our 2019 Regents' Results were fairly consistent with 2018 results. Algebra and Earth Science results don't include the students taking the exams at the middle school level. The Global History Regents' Exam, as well as the Regents' Exam in U.S. History and Government are being phased out and will be replaced with a newer version of each, which is aligned to the New York State Social Studies Framework, which Mr. Dillon is going to come up here, the Coordinator of Social Studies, K through twelve, and he will be speaking more about social studies and some, you know, work that we did in social studies last year and some recommendations that we have for the future. And I just want to thank you for your time and for your attention. As a reminder, the New York State standardized assessments are only one measure of a student's grade level performance in ELA and Mathematics. It's important to consider these data points from the standard assessments within the broader context of a student's academic profile. And I mentioned some before, but everything from their report card grades to the classroom assessments to student work that we see every day, their reading levels, topic tests in mathematics, quarterly assessments where applicable, common formative assessments, IEP goals, proficiency levels for our L students. There is so much that goes into each and every one of our students and we really can't forget the good picture. So I just want to thank everybody.
And Debbie, if I can also comment that now the Board of Regents is considering whether, you know, Regents' Exams are the best way to measure student performance. And so they're looking at possibly other measures of student proficiency and other pathways to graduation. So that's another whole thing we'll be looking at probably next year.
Yes, yeah. That was, I saw that article, that was interesting.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hand. Very much. And you know, mostly, you know, this was a packed presentation that you did in a short amount of time, but really clear. But what I just want to echo and thank you for is, especially for parents who are watching at home, is the recognition that in White Plains, we understand that singular moments in time do not characterize an entire human being. And that's really important, particularly for a parent or a guardian who's struggling and worried about a high-stakes standardized assessment that came home last year, what does this mean about my child? You know, or, or maybe it's over the last couple of years, what does this mean about my child? He's a good boy. He's a smart boy, all these things. And, and we know that, and that's true. Because these particular assessments only show one thing at one moment in time. And we understand that. The Board of Education in this school district has had a track record of understanding that. And I'm very proud to be part of that. But thank you for, for pointing that out as well, Deb. Thank you.
Can I also add that I think that there's a really, a lot of thoughtful analysis that goes in, in developing the data, analyzing the data, and looking at where kids maybe do need support and more support and providing that. So I think that's also really important, that we're looking at individual kids' results, classroom results, and figuring out where more work needs to be done. And that's a very thoughtful approach.
And creative ways that we can do it, you know? And that's, I think, a very special thing.
And then you also look at it from a broader level of how you can make critical changes, like special changes too. So it's meaningful information.
And with that, Mr. Dillon, thank you so much for, for being with us this evening and reporting on the outcomes related to the social studies curriculum review. This was a large undertaking. The Board of Education has had the opportunity to read the full report, which I believe is like a hundred and twenty-four pages.
There are appendices.
There are appendices, okay, okay. But you know, a lot of work went into this, and I want to thank you for that, Mr. Dillon. I also want to thank you, Dr. Hand, as well as the folks who participated in the committee. And, and also our students who participated by giving feedback into the process and into what their experiences were in terms of participating in our, in our K-12 social studies curriculum. So with that, Mr. Dillon, floor is yours.
Good evening, and thank you very much for providing me this opportunity this evening to present our findings. And I'd like to thank the Board for giving me this opportunity, as well as any members of the committee. I see at least one of them over there who helped participate in this endeavor. I've been there for years, I'm going to tell you how. I think this is the very first time I've actually had the opportunity to participate in any such thing having to do with social studies. We are at a critical juncture in our history, so I thought it was quite timely that we did examine some of our practices. Sometime in September, I was asked to put together a committee. And the goal for at least today's presentation is to provide you with a summary of the social studies review, as well as to give you an overview of the frameworks that were introduced in 2014 and revised in 2016. And also to really look at our vision of civic readiness, as well as share some of the recommendations that came out of this exhaustive study. The process, it's a five-year process, and we just finished the first year, which was really to put together the committee and really dig into the research and come up with some questions and gather the data and to really come up with some recommendations based on some of the data that we actually looked at. This year, we're going to begin to look at, getting involved in streamline some of the professional developments that we're going to invite teachers to participate in, as well as, and began to do this, some of the summer curriculum, to rewrite some of the curriculum and to align it with the frameworks, as well as to evaluate some of our resources, which we'll be doing ongoing throughout this year. And of course, implementation review for the third year, as well as monitoring for the fourth year and then an email in the fifth year. The committee itself, we got a very nice cross-section, about thirty people who were involved in the committee. All bands were represented, K through two, three through five. All, all buildings had representation. The six through eight were represented, as well as the high school and our program of low shambles. So everyone had some input and everyone worked quite diligently in this endeavor. Also our administrators who participated from all buildings, as well as some coordinators who took the opportunity because they're up next, up in the industry, they're going to be up next to continue the process runs. So I was getting paid. Two parents also, one from Ridgeway and one from the high school. A parent represented from the high school who was actually the PTA president, as well as being assisted by two consultants from Public North West Posters, which we use frequently for staff training. Some of the issues that we worked, planned to examine and our chart, so to speak, as I mentioned, to provide the overview and to identify some of the positive elements. We did look at some data. I won't go over the numbers this evening. And to gather and clarify some of the key questions along those, those different grade bands. We did gather a lot of facts in terms of lessons and exams and, and student work. We did gather a lot of artifacts in terms of lessons and exams and, and student work, and we examined those. And as I said, we made some recommendations, and we're developing the action plan right now based on those recommendations. The methodology that we employed to do this, this audit or this review was, of course, we looked at data. We collected the data for, for the purpose of trying to really figure out what the next steps would be, as well as, with the help of posse, created, they created the analysis, the artifact analysis tool, which really looked at those lesson plans, looked at the student work, looked at the, the assessments, and seeing how well those particular artifacts were in line with the frameworks. Surveys were created also. Surveys created with the help of members of the committee. They would at least be given the additions and additions frame. And towards the end, we had a subcommittee come together and put together a survey just for our high school seniors who would have experienced the whole K through twelve, had this K through twelve social studies experience. When the, when the report becomes more public, so I know the board is at our convenience, but when it does become public, I would invite you to actually read those comments from this, from our seniors. They're very instructive, and they're, they're actually not very helpful, and we would ask for it. We had four meetings, and within those four meetings, we did establish the rules of the road, which were those, and those protocols. And we did generate three questions that we've gone to focus on. Those three questions being, how are aligned our written New York State social studies frameworks, the K through twelve? And how were these white planes comparing our students to be civically ready? As well as, what actions or behaviors do we associate with civic engagement? So those are the three little places where we went to. We engaged in a QRT process, which really examined the whole notion of what civic engagement meant, and that was our first meeting. And a lot of us struggled with that, because we wanted to know, what is, what does it mean to civic engagement for most of us? Most people just pointed to voting. But at the end of it, we come back and we revisit that same issue of the last meeting, and we came out with a whole grocery list of what that really means, civic engagement really looks like, what it means, and how it could be, how every child, K through twelve, can participate on some level in being a civic engaged. There's no point in being, just deciding to vote it as being the only marker as being civic engaged, because if you don't have the preparation, then the outcomes of what you vote from the choices you make could be quite different. Yeah.
The whole room's excited.
So, having, in, in our second meeting, we did, at the end, actually, what we did do in that first meeting is that the, the posse's votes, consultants, did really roll out what the framework does look like. And that was very powerful for the K through five folks, who perhaps were not sure what social studies looked like after 2014. And, and even for some of the folks in the middle schools, they found that to be quite instructive also. And so in the second meeting, we looked at the, the data analysis in terms of global history and the U.S. History Regents, and that's included in the report. And we also began to review the artifacts. That was a, a, a two-meeting process, and in the meetings, the second and third meeting, we actually broke the committees into elementary as well as secondary, so that that work could be done, and people could really focus on the bits and pieces that they were familiar with. And we didn't want to have, you know, secondary and, and elementary leave out, although we brought it back together for the last meeting. The, the fourth meeting, what we, what we, what we ended up doing is that we, we looked again at the, the, what was I going to say? We looked again at the surveys, and we finalized those surveys, and we looked at some of that data, and we also proposed that subcommittee would generate a, a senior survey. And as I move towards the overview of the social studies frameworks and practice and standards, I can just sum this up by saying that, whereas you look at this slide, nothing is really changed in terms of what's being taught, even when some of your children went to school. So K through twelve, the content is essentially the same, all right? What does change is what we're asking this to do with the content, all right? It's no longer an exercise in, you know, learning or memorizing things and names and events. It's now, what do you do with that? And as you look at the, this next slide, what I call the community national teaching and learning in social studies, the new things, really the practices, what are we expecting children to do after we're teaching what we're teaching? You know? And when you look at those practices in terms of gathering and using and interpreting evidence and chronological reasoning, that, that's the do it. That's the do it. So, you know, no longer do you have to rely on a single text, you, you're really giving kids documents and trying to get them to extract the meaning out of that. I'll give you something specific on certain things, practices. And some of our takeaways was that, you know, we, we understood that all the, all of the standards, practices, and the content, they need to be aligned with this new framework. And we also understood that, you know, the state is not going to provide you a career. We are going to have to come and adapt ourselves. And which is great, because there's the freedom in there. Where are, you know, teachers are now given the choice to, and we hope that that choice, the, the notion of choice trickles down to what happens in the classroom, where students now have choices on how they can, how they can demonstrate their learning also, all right? And that, I think that's what the practice has allowed us to do. And this is actually all the teachers' images of, of the immediate work. That first image I gave was posed in QRT, where folks are trying to grapple with, what does it mean? The question was, all students, white planes, should be civically ready to participate in society. One of the questions that popped out in that QRT was, is it going to be civic engaged? And that was coming from teachers, and we're asking that question, what are our kids going to ask us? And of course, just to throw one in for lots, I mean, what is our current state of, of our current political climate if you look closely at it? It's an Uncle Sam hat. You'll, I mean, it's Uncle Sam's song. I mean, the first words are there.
It's there.
Right? Having said that, we have a district mission, and we have a vision, and we have these core beliefs. And, you know, most district beliefs, missions, they sound like these flywood statements, but it's been written somewhere that, you know, the people without a vision are lost. And I think the vision, while the vision's important, the mission is really what tells us what the work is, and, and the core beliefs of those building blocks. So if you, if you think about, there's our, there's our mission, our dual vision, mission statement, and core beliefs, promote civic readiness, I go back and I look at the core beliefs, and I look at the core beliefs in terms of providing opportunities for at least building and sustaining community. And, and some of those things, before you can build community, you have to build trust, and you have to brag about it, and you have to recognize some of those core strengths that you have, at least in this community, which we always brag about, which is our diversity. But more so than bragging about our diversity, we need to learn to embrace it, and that's where the trust comes in. Because if you just mention diversity and you're not really embracing it, then there's no sense in it, all right? Some other slides, which is really wrapping the notion of what we did in terms of flushing out, this is the last meeting, we came back to, there's the last meeting, where we came back and we visited the question of, what is, you know, what are the behaviors that are associated with that? I don't know if you can see any of that, but it goes beyond voting. You know, there's debate, there's community service, you know, there, you know, there's soliciting opinions from kids, you know, there's joining community groups and that. And we have that on a micro level at the high school of our classes, such as senior, such as midnight brunch. And if I invite anybody to go to a CTE and you see, you know, kids grabbing at self-issues. How do we prepare them to, to get our students typically engaged in white planes anyway? There is a list, a much more comprehensive list, I think it's on page forty-eight in the report. And that list would include, it's, it's pretty extensive, all right? So as I said once again, I invite anybody to, when you get an opportunity to read and look at the report, or what it is that we, and, and what it is for. And, you know, I like that final argument slide, because it's, it's actually beginning to talk about the shift that we're trying to make in terms of our practice, and, and having kids grapple with self-issues. And as you notice, there are no textual pages that reference. These are the arguments, let's sort it out. Some of the recommendations are decently for the elementary level, mostly instruction and practice and resources. We're talking about gathering and purchasing the high-quality instructional material and resources that are aligned with the social studies content, standards, and practices, and ensuring that that material and resources are also transferred into our dual language and programs, so it's accessible to all students. And as well as aligning field trips with content, standards, and practices, always getting back to the practices. The, the setting up for the practices is really the skills, what are you expecting the students to be able to do at the end of the day? And as well as selection of summer readings, was something that I believe the parents on the, on the, on the committee had come up with, that reflects social studies and initiatives we know. It's not going to be good enough just to replace some of the readings that you have in ELA with, let's say, a social studies read, somewhere along the line that has to be some time carved out in the school day to actually really focus on social studies. That's going to be a challenge, a challenge for a few years to try and figure out how we're going to address that. And that's the, the flow of the data this year today. And also realigning the report comments that might actually address, might actually say whether your child is approaching that particular practice, you know? Can they gather interpreting evidence? And that's a specific practice within the state framework. And that practice looks very different across different grades. Same practice, but what you're asking a child to do in the kindergarten versus eighth grade are two different things within that same practice. Kindergarten, identify. Eighth grade, it might be evaluate the evidence, all right? On a secondary level, we're looking at refining our tools that can be used to assess our curriculum writing from a three-dimensional lens, in terms of the standards and the practices, and investigating opportunities to expand the experience with our students, and we'll have to develop a deeper understanding of responsibilities and the value of civic engagement. As, as well as utilizing outside agencies such as Face and History and ourselves, and Living History, two organizations that we could use and leverage, and then come back and turnkey those experiences on the lower grades. Living History does a lot of reenactments, and they also provide a number of the tools that we can use, get a, like a great training with some of our middle school teachers, and then go to elementary schools and turnkey their, to the third and fourth grade teacher. On the district level, we're looking at vertically and horizontally articulation and aligning the social studies framework with the K through twelve, we're developing that local curriculum we were speaking about, as well as revising some of the stuff that does work for us in the frameworks. And in terms of curriculum planning, we're looking at aligning the standards once again, as well as providing much more opportunities. We did a lot of work this summer with summer curriculum. We've re, rebranded and realigned the ninth, the tenth, and the eleventh grade, as well as the seventh and the eighth grade. I'm sorry, sixth through twelve were done this year, were, were the summer. Of course, we're going to constantly keep working on it, and that's up to hand mentioned. There are new assessments. The transitional exam, it will sunset, sunset it actually, it's sunsetted June. No, it's sunset's January, and everyone across the state will be doing the new framework exam, which including the Common Core exam, you know, when math and English are done to the Common Core exam, there was a lot of growing pains. Our transitional exam, which we took last year and the previous year, the dip is the reflection in the growing pains that we've experienced. So that, I noticed it said eighty-three to seventy-seven percent that dip was the growing pains, because we're asking kids to do different things. It's not an exercise of ergitation, it's an exercise of applying those skills. And the, the new exam in U.S. History will be out this year, but we will wait until 2020, more, to have our students.
Is there an opportunity for students to take both, as, as happened with ELA, for example?
No, no. They wouldn't be able to take both.
Okay.
I know they did that with that, but they're not doing it with that. And it becomes a difficult nightmare also to get radio teams to do that.
Right, right, yeah.
All right, do I have any further questions?
I just, I have to say that this is a phenomenal report that we had, we were given about a week ago, and we had one evaluation done about last year on dual language, and we had requested, when Joe was hired, that we wanted to begin our program reviews of programs like writing, our reading program, social studies, science. So last year, we saw the results of the dual language program in that report, which was an outside organization that came in and did that. And this report done in-house is just as in-depth, reflective, and the findings are comparable to those findings. And it's really impressive to see, this is a tremendous amount of work went into this, so thank you to your committee and for all the hard work. I wrote down, I was so excited when I got it, I was scribbling all over it, and, and one of them, I was just so happy and proud to see that we have tangible, goal-oriented recommendations, just like the Cal Record for dual language, that not only align to the standards, but they provide PD to the teachers, resources to the teachers to integrate these findings. And if you, when it does go public and you get a chance to look through it, you have to read some of the statements by the students. And you alluded, you alluded to it, but the, the students, these were seniors, that are reflecting on their twelve years in the program in social studies, and it's so insightful into what we need, the direction we need to go in terms of resources, equity in terms of what history we're telling and, and who we're telling it to. But impressive was that, and then you, you get nervous, like, oh, they're criticizing our curriculum, and then you turn the page to their, how did they find their teachers? And they loved their teachers. They said their teachers are exceptional, they're passionate. So it's a nice balance throughout the whole report, tracking in terms of honors courses. It's just a truly impressive report, so congrats.
Thank you.
I just wanted to add that, having worked on the, the dual language committee last year, or worked with them, I, I heard you mention, and, and I want to thank you for your thoughtfulness, where, you know, you're considering taking into account the dual language students and how we take all of what we're doing and now make it accessible to the dual language classes as far as professional development and, 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 well, not only curriculum, but, but the actual books and resources, which was a major problem of, of our dual language program to begin with. So I just want to thank you for keeping that in mind as well.
Yeah, I'd just say the same thing. I really thank Dr. Hand, Dillon, and Joe. Great work.
Dr. Hand, Mr. Dillon, and Joe.
Well, you're next to me, so. And Dr. Joe. I know. I think it really goes back to, again, what, what Kane said as well. This is important work, and I think your group really took it seriously and was able to really feel it back, and you were the, the volunteer, the voluntold person to do it. And I think, I think that says a lot as well, and it sets a great start for, for everyone else, and it's, it's a building pattern. It's, you know, it's not something to beat people up about, it's about growth. We want to, you know, bring something to all of our students, and then at the same time, like we talked about today, we had our accountants here, we talked about Dr. Rick's goals, again, and, and our allocation of resources. And we want to make sure we're doing the best we can with the resources we have for our students. And this was, this was a great review. And earlier, Dr. Hand, I didn't get a chance to say it, with, with all the other information, And earlier, Dr. Hand, I didn't get a chance to say it, with, with all the other information. Again, a lot, lot of information out there. I know you're disaggregating it even further and sharing it district-wide, and that's, that's important as well, and using that information to improve the practices for our folks and for all of our students, so that they get a great experience.
Yeah, I'll just add a little bit. I, I did happen to see folks be puddled over days working on this. And I could see, you know, and it's totally reflected in the output. I know it was difficult, because I saw the difficulty, not that we didn't look happy, but the intensity, and I think the thoughtfulness, almost over every buying item, I felt when I saw you guys together was evident. So, thank you, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much, Mr. Dylan, and to the committee as well, and Dr. Hand. And also, I have to say thank you to the board for allowing us to dig into this, and to take the time, and to be able to devote the resources to this work. Continuous improvement, right? That's what, that's what it's about, and I think, trustee Ricky.
Joe.
Hit it on the head when he said that.
Mr. Jim.
Thank you again, Mr. Dylan.
So next, we're going to move on, onto our summary action items. So for summary action items, four through eight, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. I would like to call attention or your attention to item B, donations. Recommended action is to approve the following donations. School supplies from Mrs. Joyce Ivors from Rochambeau, contributions to the Rochambeau PBIS school store from Donna Centone, Sandra Serrano, Angie Garcia, and Dr. Mira Schwartz. Thank you very much to all of those generous benefactor, donors. I'd also like to call attention to item C, the Ridgeway Playground donation, coming from the Ridgeway Parent Wellness Committee, a donation of thirty thousand dollars, which was raised over the course of last year, to be used for improvements to the Ridgeway Elementary School playground, which include improvements of elements that will allow for accessibility of students with special needs that were not there previously. And also, item D, donation from the Massinter Family Foundation, and this is a donation for transportation, for the Massinter College Incentive and Scholarship Program, in the amount of two thousand nine hundred five dollars. And we'd like to offer our thanks to the Massinter family as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to our individual action items. We have the recommended approval, the recommended adoption of the policy section of the five thousands. May I have a motion?
Second.
So, the policy committee met and went through the section. We had a first reading, and we think now it's in shape for adoption. May I have a, oh.
Just did that.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Move it out of the six.
Next, we have.
We did.
Next, we have the recommended approval of the administrative appointment of Natasha Freeman, math, replacing Guy Vidiello at the high school.
I thought someone objected, huh?
It's okay. It's okay, we can read it again.
I just say, repeat it.
Yeah, repeat it, don't worry. The recommended approval of the administrative appointment of Natasha Freeman, math, replacing Guy Vidiello at the high school. The assignment will be administrative assignment for homebound instruction and superintendent hearings and student activities at the high school. May I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Wow.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Ms. Freeman, Mac, and welcome to the White Plains family. It's great that you're here with us for this evening. This is an interesting role, and it's kind of a potpourri of very important things all in one. And you did a wonderful job during the interview process, head to shoulders, coming out as the recommended candidate, and we look forward to working with you in the future. Thanks, Mr. Pepper, for your work, as well as the folks who were on the committee as well. And you have the, I guess, pleasure, I hope, of working closely with me during superintendent's hearings. Hopefully, we won't have that many of them this year, so welcome.
That should be the light part of the job.
That's the light part of the job, right.
Okay, and our last individual action item is the recommended approval of the superintendent's goals and objectives for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty academic year. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks again to the board for a great goal-setting, building process, I really do appreciate it. And so that the folks know, it really is a collective effort, and, you know, the items that were within the goals do reflect our shared mission and vision, and I'm really excited to move forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So next, we'll move on to board committee reports. So, the policy committee met, and we approved the five thousand.
Six thousand are coming back.
Can review the six thousands in painstaking detail.
No, 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 it's not, it's not painstaking.
No, it's. Detail.
It's detailed. But it's okay, that's what, that's.
Not with pain.
Thomas, take a big deal.
Yeah, absolutely.
We've all seen that.
And periods, dots.
And we also had our HR meeting, and we discussed personnel matters that we cannot discuss publicly, and wanted to finance that, and you heard you ordered a support, so that we can sum up what we did most recently.
And curriculum met, and we had some, actually, some really interesting information provided to us. ENL Summer Experience for ninth graders, beginning in English as a new language. So Lisa Panera joined us and spoke about the summer programming in which those students participated, and it looked like they learned and had a great experience. American Sign Language is super popular.
Very exciting.
And we had to actually expand, because it is so popular, and add an extra section of, you know, the first level. We talked about the social studies review, and envisioned math twenty twenty, rolling out to grades three through five, and we also talked about the ELA in math, you know, state exam results, so all good.
Oh, sorry, oh, sorry.
I can just mention one thing, the one thing I need to collect to mention, a lot of times, we do have competing meetings on the first Thursday of every month, but the youth bureau had their gala to help raise money for the activities and what they do for this community. And I just wanted to recognize that where a few of us were at the gala, I think it was a quick turnout, a different format in terms of like a reception. So I wanted to recognize that, and if Frank is watching the next first Thursday of the month, I don't have anything on my calendar yet, and I don't think we have anything competing. But just to say that I'm happy to be the ladies own, and we look forward to continue to strengthen our partnership.
And special.
Go ahead.
No, you go ahead.
The one committee that was left out was the special ed committee. And so, sorry, Debbie. We continue, we continue to, to focus on and take a look at the students who are being brought back into district and being mainstreamed back into the classroom, into our integrated co-teaching classes. And we're also keeping an eye on the group of students who have come back to us from Rochambeau. We were looking to bring back our entire Stars program?
So Stars, the Integrated Support Program now at the high school.
Right. So we were going to bring the entire program back, but after some review, we decided to bring back just part of the program, part of the group of students, and so they are now back at the high school with several teachers who were brought back with them. They continue to have a homeroom type setting, where they are free to go in and check in and still have the supports that they may need, and at the same time, they are being mainstreamed into general ed classes. So we're very happy to say that, you know, we're doing a lot of work in that area, and we will continue to keep an eye on these students, to make sure that, that they're being supported, and that they are continuing to flourish.
Yeah, I just wanted to add two non-committee issues I just wanted to address, was the district-wide equity committee. I just wanted us to be mindful of working parents. Some of those seven dates are Monday through Friday, nine thirty to three thirty, so if we can incorporate a Saturday for parents that are working, or an evening, just some way of addressing and getting the voice of some parents that are not available, and can commit to those seven days.
Absolutely. We, we struggled with that, Kane, to your point, and we did talk with NYU about, you know, sort of how to approach it. The difficulty, of course, is that the working parents who are working outside of the district as stakeholders, and then the working parents who are actually employees of the district as stakeholders, it becomes a real push and pull, but you're right. And, and one of the things that, that we heard back from NYU was, you know, this is one of those situations where you actually go to your employer and say, this is what I'm participating in, type of a thing, you know, and try and get that, yeah, but it's not.
And then my other question, my statement was about Eastview Open House, just very quickly, it was a phenomenal evening, there was, unfortunately, it was overshadowed by some parking issues that we were expressed, which apparently are historic issues over at that building. And I just wondered if we could work closer with the city somehow, maybe a joint effort, just looking at some of the options, a shuttle from the gallery, not the gallery, from the city center.
No, no, no. I would agree. Having done that, I would agree with you. I was at the Highlands, fortunately, I walked to that one.
Yeah, I parked up the street.
High school, they were all over the, they were on the lawn, they were in the fire lane, and fortunately enough, my car ended up in lockup that night. It got caught in the gates, and the facilities guy sprung me, so.
I think there's a private parking lot above the Stop and Shop that we might look into.
It's, some of the car dealerships use that, yeah. So there's a lot of cars. Parking is a challenge, you know, what we're, what we're going to do is reach, you know, we're, we're working with the city, in fact, I have another, or a second meeting, actually, with, with the city tomorrow to follow up. But we think we have some work, you know, workarounds in place to try and help. We did, we did do what we could to say, you know, to let folks know, to be careful of where they parked.
And to come early.
And to come early and all that, but.
I mean, the positive aspect is that the attendance was so great, Eastview was packed, I was at Church Street for two open houses.
Great attendance.
Really great attendance, yeah.
Kane, you also participated in the Westchester Putnam School Board Association.
Yeah, we have a lot going, I'll get out by nine o'clock, I promise, and here very quickly. I'm a board director on the Westchester School Board, Putnam, Westchester Putnam School Board Association. They've got a great evening coming up for board members on mental health and wellness. They've got a speaker coming in, Dr. Ecker, he's going to talk about mental health and wellness in schools, to board members and superintendents. It's the hundredth convention for NISBA, New York State School Board Association, and that's happening at the end of the month, on the twenty-sixth, so the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-sixth. But next year, the hundred and first one, very exciting, will be held in New York City.
New York again, yes.
So we're going to hang out and go to that one next year. And finally, they're looking for some input on the foundation and formula aid, specifically the measure, the measure they're asking for student needs and ability of districts to meet the needs of those students. Specifically, the Senate Education Committee and the Senate Committee on Budget and Revenue are meeting and looking for input, so if we have any input, I think we're going to represent it, it's going to be in y'all's.
Shall we, New York?
Yeah, it's close. And that is my update from the Westchester Putnam School Association.
Thank you. So before we, before we go to, before I may go ask for adjournment of the meeting, I'd like to recognize Ray Oghida, one of our guys who backed in, and our steady hand, John Sheffer, for just always being our steady hand. Thank you both for what you do and helping us bring transparency to all of our community that can't physically be here, but for them to be a part of this through what you do, we thank you. Thank you to all the presentations. Obviously, all you guys work very hard, appreciated, you're bringing us good people, you're servicing our kids, we're being proactive, we're great partners, so thank you, thank you, thank you. We thank you for the board recognition. Please know this is work that we take seriously, and you should be able to tell that by our tenure, but it, you know, I speak, I think for everyone when I say this is something important that, that needs to be done, and that we do with pleasure. So thank you, everyone, and thank you folks for attending as well. And with that.
Especially those who stay.
And with that, may I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Good night.
Good night.